Have you be the, the first one here. And I know Patrick's been very involved in this, Commissioner-elect Patrick Hollinger, and also Lynn Coker. So, I know you guys have been talking with Sam about this award. And, and if you guys don't mind stepping up to the podium and, and talking about some of Sam's accomplishments, we'd love to hear about it.
Yeah, it's quite an honor and privilege to be able to get to stand up here and read these words that have been constructed about Sam and his services, not only for the county, but throughout his, his life. And we're very fortunate to have him here, living in our county and being a part of our community. And the involvement and roles that he plays, not only with, with the Sheriff's Office here, but with the veterans of our community as well. And I'll, I'll read here what we have, we have put together about Mr. Sam Vitale. He is currently a resident of Brookings, Oregon, and friend to many. He was born shortly after the close of World War II. His parents were Italian immigrants who raised six children in Rockford, Illinois. He was born near the middle of the pack with lots of older and younger siblings. And his dad was a machinist and mom worked hard at home to care for the family of eight. His mom was renowned as a cookie and pastry baker. Hopefully, you saved some of those recipes for us. At 10, his dad was laid off and then joined his brothers mowing lawns in Rockford to help make ends meet. Following his dad's footsteps, as soon as he was old enough, Sam shoveled snow and contributed his wages to his mom for household upkeep and food for the family. Sam continued working on the family's behalf throughout high school. He even gave up his desire to play football so that he would be able to get a better job. He started working after school as a beggar at Piggly Wiggly, then was promoted to the produce department. About a year after he graduated from high school at the age of 19, Sam was drafted into the armed services. Even in those early years of service to his county, to his country, Sam stood out as a leader of men. For instance, in boot camp at Fort Leonard Wood, Missouri, Sam worked overtime to assist the men in his unit who were having difficulties overcoming the physical training challenges. In 1968, Sam was stationed in Vietnam and eventually found himself assigned to the Kwan Loy Base, also known as LZ Andy or Rocket City. It was at base camp that history books report some of the most intense and brutal combat unfolded during the war in South Vietnam. Sam was recognized and awarded for his courage and valor in the face of extreme danger, saving a fellow entryman at base camp. Also, it was here, when Sam had just turned 20, that Sam contracted a severe case of malaria. But yet, Sam had not faced an even more deadly violent force on his horizon. Sam's malaria fever of 105 no sooner broke when base camp Kwan Loy was surrounded than cut off by enemy troops. Quickly, the hill Sam and his friends occupied exploded with enemy mortar, artillery, and small arms fire, not just for one day or even two, but for two weeks. Eventually, reinforcements and supplies were able to break through the battle lines. But yet, on one day, in one single day, Sam lost 32 men from his unit. Not long afterwards, Sam returned home from his tour of duty, or at least part of Sam returned home from Vietnam. Sadly, some of the best young men, Sam was left in the bloody fields of Hellfire, twisted steel, and broken men. Sam's new home life was plagued with intrusive video playbacks of battle, cruel yet lingering mental still photographs of comrades, plus battle sounds playing out in his head. And this was daily. Sam arrived home with unacknowledged and untreated PTSD. Once home, Sam had many warrior combat nightmares, flashbacks and memories. He struggled with negative emotions, fear, anger, misplaced guilt, sadness, and depression. He no longer got along with his mom and other family members, and he found living in his parents' home to be very uncomfortable, so he had moved out. In Sam's apartment, he found the needed quiet space to begin the healing and restoration process. And Sam reached out to his friend, Rita Ann. Hi Rita. And it was in this friendship with Rita where Sam found the life gift of recovery and renewal. Rita Ann was his friend, his guide, his healer, and his soon-to-be-wife. Sam and Rita Ann have been married for five decades. And with more than 20 years of living in Curry County, they have knitted together a vast network of neighbors and friends. Today, we're here to honor Sam for his dedication to his Curry County family, friends, and neighbors. We also celebrate the fact that his devotion to us is exactly what we have seen repeated in Sam's life these past 77 years. In Curry County, Sam has served our veterans community for 20 years. In fact, he corralled the people and the resources necessary to build the Curry County Veterans Memorial here in Gold Beach. As a craftsman and woodworking hobbyist, Sam has gifted countless Curry neighbors with custom-made wood crafts, decorations, and holiday carvings. Even now, he continues to serve as a volunteer deputy in our Curry County Sheriff's Office, responding wherever support is needed. He has patrolled shoulder to shoulder as a volunteer deputy and regularly scrubs and polishes our jailhouse cells, including the bathrooms and the showers. In 2023, Sheriff John Ward praised Sam for his outstanding and faithful service by naming him the exclusive recipient of the Sheriff's Outstanding Volunteer of the Year Award. For his devotion to Curry County, plus his friendship and service, we recognize Sam Vitale today with this commemorative plaque. Not only do we recognize and honor him today, but we also trust that he serves as an example to many others with a passion for being part of the answer to the challenges Curry County faces today. Thank you, Sam. We love having you here, and it's been an honor for the, just even knowing you for the short time I've, I've known you, but it feels like I've known you forever. Thank you for all that you do.
Speech, speech.
Yes.
He's trying to hide. Thank you, gentlemen. Can we get Rita out there with you too?
Sure, yeah.
Is there anything you'd like to say, Sam?
Thank, getting choked up here. I thank you from the bottom of my heart. I love this country. I love the state. And I sure as hell love this county. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart for this. This is truly an honor. And I beg to honor this, my life, and the life, and building that memorial, the ones I lost. Never, never forget them. I'll feel the happy face again someday. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. We appreciate you, man. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to just take a moment, too. I just want to also acknowledge that, you know, Tony Vaudy wanted to be here today to celebrate this as well. And I just wanted you to know that. And Sam, I am humbled by this. You know, you have lived a life, you know, that includes everything. And, you know, not a whole lot of men like you, they grace our presence very often. And when it is, when it does happen, it needs to be celebrated. I think you, you remind us all what's important. And, and it, and it, and it's a needed reminder. I mean, we get, I can speak personally, you know, get caught up in, in things around here that we seem, that may seem big and insurmountable. But in the context of everything that you've accomplished and overcome and achieved, it, it, it seems pretty menial. And it's, it's a great reminder of that, to be humble in, in that capacity. And I, I agree with Commissioner Alcorn that this first service award for County, Curry County citizen could not have gone to a, a better person. Thank you.
Yep, and I'm, I'm gonna just make a brief comment to you, Sam. The first time I met you, you were in, you were in uniform. It was at a veterans event, and I didn't know, didn't know who you were. I just saw you there. You stood out, you stood out in my, in, in my eyes. It was the way you wore your uniform, the pride. It was a little bit different than everybody else. It was just, there was something about it. And then later on, I found out where you had served, what your accomplishments were in your service, and, and some of the, some of the combat that you had experienced. And in fact, I just heard a podcast about Rocket City. I just heard some of the stories that came out of that. It's, I mean, it, that was incredible, just an incredible life experience that you went through for our country. And, and what an honor. What an honor, man. So, couldn't appreciate you more. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say, my mother, Norma Fitzgerald, gave me some advice a few years ago, and it was mostly because of Sam Vitale. She said, "Listen, Ted, whatever the Vietnam vets want, just do it." And so I've tried to live by that advice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, moving forward in the agenda, next up is general public comments. We have one comment card, and that is Lynn Coker.
Thanks, Lynn Coker. Live here in Gold Beach. And I just wanted to come in and talk to us briefly about the wind turbine status. Each of the board members and staff have been a part of probably six weeks' worth of work trying to get the referendum completed, so that we have an advisory question that's going to appear on the November 5 ballot. I want to let everybody know that that has been successfully placed. Doesn't mean that the state at some point in the near future couldn't come back with questions, and will scurry to respond to them. But nevertheless, we've done our part to get the boat out into the ocean. Relative to the people that have been so helpful, obviously, their BOC staff have been incredibly helpful. Each of the commissioners has been incredibly helpful. A great tip of the hat to Shelley and her team getting this stuff done. I mean, we were in the dark relative to the procedures that needed to be done, and they, they worked hard to get it done right the first time. And as near as we can tell, we, we scored in that regard. So I really appreciate that. And then the other volunteers in Coos County. We're doing this in tandem with Coos, as you know, and that has progressed. They got theirs filed as well. Just a little bragging rights, ours was filed more comprehensively and with more detail than theirs, so go ahead and go team. The downside, Bohm has not let off. The Bureau of Ocean Energy Management has not let up on the accelerator. In fact, for us, they're pushing it forward. Inasmuch as through NOAA and Bohm, we've had aircraft and vessels for the last couple of weeks up and down the coast doing their surveying. And Jay will talk more about information that he's got here yet today relative to the pace of the work that they're doing. But they're not letting up. And we can't expect them to let up because the federal government is attempting to spend all these billions of dollars before the elections come, or at least get them committed in the, in the cycle of funding, so that they can't be pulled back by a new administration should that event unfold. But the industry, in spite of the government willing to spend billions of dollars, is slowing down. And that's because the profit margins associated with both land-based as well as ocean-based wind turbine production of electricity, that profit margin is getting, just from the developer's perspective, too risky. And so we're seeing massive cancellations along the East Coast in terms of wind projects on the ocean, but it's also happening on land. So it's, it's an industry-wide experience that they're going through for a lot of different financial regions, but that's the good news. Our commitment, from the volunteers' perspective, is we're just going to keep our head down and our butt up, and we're going to be, a couple of times every month, we're going to have opposition rallies in Coos, Curry, and, and here in Curry County. And hopefully, you guys will be able to join us from time to time out there waving the signs. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. And thank you for all the hard work you put into this. I get your, I get your update emails that go out to everybody, and there's some really good information in that. It's, it's, it's good to stay on top of, of all that. I have yet to have anyone explain or tell me how anyone in this county will benefit from those. No, no one has, no one so far has provided any information to that, to that effect. So, we will continue to fight, but we really appreciate your, your work and effort on that. Thank you. All right, next up is the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion and a second. All in favor?
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero. All right, discussion action items, and first up is opioid funds. And I'll talk about this one since it came out of Lipsec. Let me turn to the right page here. So this came out of our Lipsec meeting. It's page 57 in our packet. So, this is, this was discussed at the meeting. I also had a, an after conversation with Lieutenant Crone and Lieutenant Denny about this proposed project and opportunity. And, and basically, we have a, a person, Mary Price, and she gave us a, a short presentation at, at Lipsec, so was able to hear her speak about this. She's currently a certified member of, it's a, she's basically providing some level of counseling right now, and she's going to school to get her credentials. And once that's accomplished, she'll be a certified alcohol and drug counselor. And what she's asking for is to use some opioid money to fund her further education to accomplish that certification. And once that is accomplished, she'll be able to provide that service here at our county jail in conjunction with what Lieutenant Denny and Lieutenant Crone are, are doing. It's a service we don't have now. And I believe the total investment from the opioid funds is $1,200. That's 1,200, and it's, comes out to $100 per month. So it's a relatively low investment, and the return that we would get on that investment is a, a program that would add benefit and value to our current jail situation.
There's enough money to cover it, right?
Oh, we have plenty. We have plenty of money in there. We have, I want to say, 700,000 in there right now, so yes.
You want a motion?
Yeah, so we would need a motion to...
We have 700 of opioid funds?
Right around there right now. Yes, we do.
I'll make a motion that we spend $100 a month from September 2024 to September 2025 to support Ms. Pierce, right?
Mm-hmm.
I'll second.
All right, motion and a second. All in favor?
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero. So next up is the added item, which is the wildfire map.
Perfect. So Natasha, would you mind, there you are, working on that. Good, good, good. Okay, zoom in just a touch, please. One more. Okay, good, thank you. All right, so we recently, it was the third and final comment period for this Oregon wildfire risk mapping program that was pushed down by legislation as a result of the 2020 fires. And so, there's, there's a few things that accompany this. So, in the comment period that we were offered, all, there was almost every county, almost every county was present for comment minus Lane, Multnomah, and I think Clackamas County, which you will realize has no, has very little bearing on their population sites because those have you, if you look, that is considered green, which is low-risk areas, which basically has zero impacts. Now, when we talk about impacts, so, well, first of all, first thing I want to do is say, in the, in the meeting, we were, we were allowed to comment on the map, not the subsequent building and planning procedures that are associated with the risk areas, nor the, the pending insurance situations that may occur from it. We were only allowed to comment on the map. So I will, I will give you a quick brief on my comments. My comments were, number one, it was apparent that there was no consideration for Curry County in terms of incorporating the protective factors that the marine layer provides to 95% of the citizens that live in Curry County. So the marine layer was not considered as in, as, as a risk mitigator in, in this mapping project. I had brought that up during the first discussion session, and I was hoping that they would make some adjustments, but they, they didn't. The, so the orange signifies high risk, the purple is moderate risk, and the green is low risk. And so the other comments that I had was, was this. I said, you know, would, I asked the professionals, would it not reduce the risk to our citizenry if the state and federal governments were required to provide fuel suppression mitigation and better timber management techniques? That was, the Department of Forestry was present in the meeting, and so was the BLM, and they declined to comment. I also pointed out that the other factors that they didn't bring in when building this, this, this incomplete map was history, as in, as in, as in fire history, and wind patterns, which are driving force of, 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 of fire. Which, of which, 97% of the time, our wind is moving from west to east off of the ocean. Only on the rare occasions when we have a Chekko effect does it reverse course, which would have been a protective factor as well. They said they did incorporate history, and I interrupted and said, "It is apparent that you did incorporate some fire history," as, as if you can, if you can zoom in on Curry County, Natasha. There you go, just a little bit more and re-center it there. So if you notice that big purple area right in the middle of our forest, so that purple area signifies the Chekko Bar Fire, which they identified as moderate risk now because it has been burned. So I said, "It is obvious that you have identified some recent fire history, but if you have looked at historic fire history," meaning that there has not been a wildland fire that impacted our coastal communities in over 100 years. And that should be identified as a protective factor as well. But it was not. And so, what this means for us, what this means for us, the direct impact that it means for us, is this. Going forward, any renovations or any new builds will require different planning clearances and different building codes. There will be, you can have no flammable surfaces on your, on your infrastructure except for on your, your timber framing, but your siding, and now all has to be hardy board, and your roofs all have to be metal. There are gutters, there are all kinds of different building parameters that, when this is codified mid-next month, will be in effect going forward for all new builds and renovations. In the high, in the high-risk areas in particular, there are building and planning restrictions for the moderate risk as well, they're just not quite as restrictive. Now, if you notice, majority of South County is in the orange. It encompasses pretty much, I would say, the most of the population. The, the piece of this that is being, is widely noticed, acknowledged, but unspoken, is the impacts that this is going to have on people's insurance. Now, this, the legislation said, in their infinite wisdom, the legislation said, "Hey, we're going to create this risk map, but insurance agencies who are risk, in the risk business, are not allowed to use it." So of course, you rename it, you, you use their data, and you, you, you essentially use the same thing. What we are finding is that we have multiple insurance companies that are not writing insurance policies for our county now, nor renewing policies for our county now. Some insurance companies are raising rates. I've, I've, I've spoke to one individual whose home insurance policies rose $7,000 for the year. That was on top of what they were paying. And so, the, the collateral damage that this map is going to cause rural Oregon, in particular Curry County, will be, will be devastating. It will cost more to build here, it will cost more to insure here, it will cost more to live here. And we, we have to, we have to plan accordingly, we have to prepare to push accordingly, because this, this is not something that, well, I can tell you right now, of all the counties that spoke, every single county commissioner that spoke for the counties regarding this map were livid. Were, I mean, you go to some of the areas, take for instance, Harney County, this was one that stood out to me. They actually pulled the map up, zoomed in on an alfalfa pivot. This alfalfa pivot, it was obvious on the map, it was irrigated, it, the pivot is in the picture. It was identified as high risk, and they said, "How can an alfalfa pivot that's irrigated, that's harvested green, that's stubble nine months of the year, be identified as high risk?" All they're doing is trying to run our ranchers out of business by being, having uninsurable And so, yes, the, the consequences of this will be, are going to be, have been extreme for, for many reasons. So, I, I've reached out, well, actually, a, a known individual podcaster to our, our region reached out, wants to do an episode on, on this, including some of the other counties, and, 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 and get this, get this information out to people. But, you know, strategically, and not, not just strategically, but responsibly, I think we, I, what I would suggest to this, to this group right now, is that we do two things, and we do two things quickly. The first thing we do is we convene a meeting with our The first thing we do is we convene a meeting with our local insurance agents, and we have them the opportunity to explain to the public why some of them are not writing policies for our county, and why some of them are, and the ones who are, allow the public to know who they are, so they don't default on mortgages because they cannot fulfill their insurance requirements due to the mortgage lenders, and get that information out. And then secondly, I think that we, we really explore a declaration of emergency. We, we declare an emergency, we, and we declare the emergency on the basis of that our federal and state lands have been mismanaged since nineteen ninety. That has led to our constituents having a financial and physical burden unlike anywhere else, that needs to be remedied, and we require them to take fire suppression steps, mitigation, logging, to protect our communities. Because the one thing about this entire mapping project that's did not, does not sit well with any local leadership across the state is that all of the onus that this map has created falls on, falls on the, the private owners. Our public entities have zero consequence for managing their lands appropriately, which we all know, in the last twenty years, we've had other five hundred thousand acres burned, and every single fire started in the state and federal lands. And so if we, there was, there's no requirement for them to protect the communities from their mismanagement of lands. And I think this also leads right into Commissioner-elect Hollinger's idea that, you know, we, we, we have been examining as well. But, one of the greatest pieces of evidence that we now have is this map they've created. And we can utilize this map as, as a piece of evidence that our, our federal and state partners have, have, have let us all down, have let all the communities down by not managing their lands, by not harvesting the resources, by not maintaining the roads, so that we can fight some of these fires. And the financial impacts are not just what we're receiving now. Our financial impacts go back decades. Our financial impacts go back decades of, of loggers who lost their jobs, of, of timber companies that ran dry of timber, of our communities that lost that, the, the economy that this, that, that, that resource provided for us. And we can even go as far as to say, our public safety that has been diminished. And so I think it's time, I think that if we start this process, and we roll, get the ball rolling, we will find that we have thirty-plus counties that follow suit shortly after.
So, you, you're correct in everything you just said, and I, I support every, everything that you just said. So I've already felt the effects of this. And I felt the effects of this when I received a, a letter from my insurance company, my home insurance company. And my home is in the city of Brookings, it's probably a hundred and fifty yards or so from the water. It's well within the marine layer, which by the way, in fire season, usually in Brookings, when you go to work in the morning, you're turning your wipers on, because there's enough moisture to, to need you to turn those wipers on. I'm, my home is in a residential neighborhood, there's homes, other homes all around my house. There's no forest around my home, there's Brookings Harbor, or Brookings Fire is probably, I don't know, mile and a half away, maybe? And I got a letter from the insurance company that said that my insurance would be canceled, gave the date, and said that it was due to the wildfire risk, and gave me a score. And I don't remember what the number was. But it was pretty clear that this map would have been used to come up with that.
You're not supposed to have that map. Well, the maps have been public, I mean, obviously, we, anybody can pull it up.
So, yeah, it gave me a, it gave me a, a score. And again, this is, this is a home in the city. It's not rural, it's not anywhere near a forest, it's not anywhere near. And, so yeah, I'll be, I'll be going with another insurance company now.
Well, I think you should tell everybody the name of your insurance company.
Well, I will tell you that the other piece of this that I failed to mention is, it, it was another, it, piece that lacks the integrity of this entire mapping system, is the fact that it does not matter what mitigating factors you take for your own property. If you build, if you built with all of their recommended materials, and you put in all the recommended procedures, it will not change the overall risk of your area that you live in. Your plot of land will not change. Now, if you scroll out real quick for me, I want to point out just how faulty the integrity of this is. Scroll out a little bit more, and then go over to Harney County. Roll over to Harney County there. There, now scroll in just a touch, right there in the center of the screen, it says Malheur Lake. The entire lake is identified as moderate. This is a giant lake, and it's moderate. So I don't understand how a two hundred thou- two hundred thousand acre lake
is in green.
Is in, is not green, right? So, I mean, this just shows the lack of integrity that this mapping project. Scroll in on the green spots, in between the two lakes. So it looks like there's a little beach that might be protected, but the lake is not.
Because you got burning lakes over there.
Right. You know, so, this is, this, I, 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 I expect that there's going to be extreme pushback on this, on this mapping project, but as it sits, it is going to be codified, it is going to go into effect, and the, and the laws pertaining to building and planning codes will be enforced by this, at the state level, per this map. And you can scroll all the way out and show everybody, the only green, for the most part, is Eugene to Portland.
If you filled up the whole Lam- valley with water, then so it still wouldn't be as good, it, it still wouldn't be green.
So that lake is moderate, but Eugene and Portland are all good?
Are all low.
So that really says a lot, doesn't it? So, I, I agree with what you're saying, Jay. I, I think another thing that we should consider is we, we should combine our voices with our city leadership, with our mayors, our city managers, and the League of Cities, LOC. And this is not just affecting people who live in rural locations, but it's affecting people in our cities also. And they need to, they need to be as, as actively involved as we are, and, and we need to be a much louder voice with their support.
Agreed. Go, go back down to Curry County real quick. I want to show you something else that I found interesting, just like the lake. Now scroll in, scroll in, go closer, go even closer. Now go down towards the coast. Yep, there you go. So, keep going. The Cheko River is moderate.
Now, what's the difference between the two colors of purple, or blue, blue, blue and purple, Jay, is it?
I don't know, but if you go, if you go up the, if you go up the Cheko even further, you'll see a little island that's green. That's, that's the only space in all of Curry County besides the center, center of Brookings. That is green.
So what's, what's the difference between the center of Brookings and the edges of Brookings? What, what's?
Well, that's a, that's part of, so when we asked all those questions, and the, and the commissioners from the other counties did ask a lot of these questions, they were, were, were basically told, look, we use the best technology, we, we, we hired the most knowledgeable people, so you know, don't, don't ask dumb questions, is what they basically said. Now go up the Cheko to the first corner, now scroll in. Now, explain to me how you can have a low risk attached to a high risk surrounded by a moderate risk. Right? Like, the, the integrity of this map, there is no integrity to this map.
The counties that are green have made this state blue. That's the, they're, they're green, and that makes this state blue.
And red. Or, or orange.
I'm thinking blue as in.
Yeah, no, I understand where you're going with this. But, I mean, look at that, if you own that parcel of land next to the one that's low, you, you are essentially un- insurable and have all kinds of parameters that you have to follow, but the other piece of land that's adjoined to you has none. So.
It's bizarre.
It's, it is extremely strange. You know, I, I, it, it, it's, it's, it lacks integrity. So, I wanted to make sure that I, I, I asked to put this on the agenda because I feel like this is threat number one right now, immediate threat number one to Curry County, and that we need to.
Based on the, on the, on the actual injury that, that is going on right now, people getting their insurance canceled and so forth, and the new building codes and so, and everything that are being imposed on us, would it be reasonable to, to consider a state of emergency?
I think so. I, I, well, I, I, if there was ever a need, I can't imagine one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, we can, what we can do, if you'd like, I can, I can work something up, and we can have that for the next meeting. And then we might want to talk to some of our neighboring counties in the meantime and find out. I mean, this is gonna, this is affecting everybody, everybody in a big way.
Well, unless you're green.
Well, right. I mean, right there, that's part of that, that, there's a section there, it's in the, right in the Cheko that's, looks safe.
Well, I, I, I mean, and we know that the Cheko, you know, all the rivers, they grow in small, like, you look at the corner, the corner is extreme, and that's a rock bar.
Right.
That's a gravel bar. You know, so yeah, it's, it, 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 this, I will, I would love to work with you on that as well, Ted.
Okay. Because if you look at that big purple spot in lower Curry County, that, that is all, that was created by the Cheko Bar Fire. And you can see, it, it burned until it impacted private timberland, and then it got put out. When it was, when it was, it was, it was allowed and encouraged to, it was to become a conflagration, and burned around, burned, you know, around Panther Creek, as I recall, and then both sides of Bosse Butte and all of that, and it just became so huge, and it didn't have to be that way.
So scroll back out real quick, just a touch, just a little bit more. So go up. So what you're talking about right here, so the houses that were burned during the Cheko Bar Fire are now moderate, but their neighbor is high.
Yeah, well, so that's how we get it low, we just burn a whole, oh, we could do that, I guess.
I mean.
So, so because we haven't been able to harvest timber appropriately, now the people of this county have to pay more money for their insurance.
And to build.
And to build, and to plan.
And renovate.
And if we would have been allowed to harvest that timber, then we wouldn't have had to go to the people and ask them for a levy that we just did. This makes no sense at all.
Correct.
We are being governed by people who don't live here.
Who are mismanaging our natural resources.
Well, and who apparently want us all to leave.
Right. It's not a hard line to draw.
Oh, we are.
To that assumption. So, this is the, this is the next fight. This is the next fight.
Okay, we'll work on that.
Also, I just wanted, I, here, I want to hand this out, I received this just prior to this meeting. So Ted, this is gonna come into play with the letter that you crafted recently, but the US Department of Interior announced today that the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, BOAM, will hold an offshore wind lease sale for two lease areas offshore Oregon on October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. BOAM will offer two lease areas in federal waters offshore Oregon in the Pacific Wind Lease Sale Two, PAC W two, commercial leasing for the wind power on the outer continental shelf of Oregon. The Oregon Final Sale Notice, which is published in the Federal Register on Tuesday, September third, twenty twenty-four, provides detailed information about these lease areas, lease provisions and conditions, auction details, and award procedures. The FSN also includes a list of eligible bidders who have met BOAM's qualifications regarding requirements to hold commercial lease and participate in the PAC W two lease sale. So, they are moving forward, as, as Lynn had said in here, they are not missing a step, even though we have formally called them in for coordination, which they are legally bound to do. They have not followed that obligation. So they are basically, they are, 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 our request was neither, it was acknowledged that, that they received it, but it is not, it was ignored.
They're related to the same folks that made that map, I think.
Yeah, I don't know.
I think, I think Oregon State University made that map.
Oregon State University did win the award to make this map. If you look at the bottom, they credit ESRI, NASA, NGA, USGS, FEMA, Oregon State Parks, Oregon, State of Oregon, GEO, Tom Tom Garmin, Safeguard, Geo Technologies, there's more, it's Bureau of Land Management. So basically, a whole bunch of tech companies that overlook topography, and then the Oregon Department of Forestry, Bureau of Land Management, and Oregon State Parks were their state partners in identifying the risk.
Do you know how much money they got as the award to make the map?
I believe it was just over two million dollars.
Is Lobes State Park.
It's not bad, you just do a little layering and you're done, and it's completely inaccurate, the easy two million.
Yes. Yes. So, not the best news. Not, I mean, obviously, you felt the bad news in person before most are even aware of the map. And the other piece of this is, I, we really need to get this out to the public, because I'm sure people are receiving non-renewals that says due to wildfire, and they're, they're just assuming that it's in the, it's just individual, and they don't understand that this was not an issue until this map was created. That's not a hard line to draw.
Yeah, I didn't have any problem whatsoever. And, and I owned this home during the Cheko Bar Fire, and I didn't have any problems following that at all, until this map came out.
Right. So, you know, I, yeah.
And they didn't even raise your, they didn't say, we're gonna raise your rate.
Yeah, when the policy, in the, in the end date of the policy is over, it's done.
Well, and I, I read it, and how I know that they used this is their last qualifying statement said, we rec, we, we would advise you to take measures to mitigate the risk around your property due to wildfire. However, please note that in doing so, your score will most likely not lower, which is exactly the same standard that they're taking, is saying, hey, great, you did all those things, great, you created defensible space, great, you used a metal. Great, you used a metal roof. Great, you have hardy boarding. But just understand that it's not gonna change your score.
Wow. That's lose, lose, right?
Yeah, so, and, and this map is supposed to be updated every five years. Um. Which all it will do is turn the purple area that checkco bar fire was in in five years and it'll be back to orange because. The vegetation will have grown up enough around there that, to, to make it so, so. Um, I doubt there will be much reversing going on. But with enough pushback, there could be elimination of this map. We'll see. So.
All right, well, um, let's get the cities involved. Let's uh get those, our insurance representatives to the table. And um, and be able to present information to the people as soon as we can. And um, and if it's an emergency declaration that we need to do, let's get it done.
Okay. Sounds good. I'll um, I'll reach out to the cities. And work with Ted on the emergency declaration.
Uh, any further discussion? All right, next up is uh Director of Operations update.
Um, I have an update for you on the issue that was brought to our attention in July twenty ninth special. Meeting, um. At that meeting, the sheriff made us aware that um. He had transferred a canine asset of Curry County, a dog named Darvett. To um, outside, outside of the county, to Josephine County for fostering and apparently retraining. In his comments, he suggests that the dog was not properly trained for use and its um, use over the recent past. Uh, I had, I wanted to find out, may have exposed the Canada liability and so I asked for the, all the records relating. To uh the dog's training certifications, deployment to date for Curry County. That was, I sent that. As an email on, on uh July, on June, July thirtieth. Um, I also asked for uh documentation relating to the, the transfer. Of the dog to Josephine County that was done outside of county. It was done in contravention of county procurement rules. I made the sheriff aware of that as well. Turned out in my investigation, I found there were no, there were no documents. There, there was no. There was no paperwork regarding the transfer of the dog. That's a, that's a large liability. Risk for Curry County to have transferred that thing that we're responsible for, especially a dangerous, potentially dangerous dog. Outside of the county. I, I uh then contacted um. Josephine County and was contacted by their sheriff, uh, uh, Dave Daniels. And um, so we have, we, we made that dog available to every agency in Curry County. No one is currently, none, neither Fort Orford, uh, Brookings or Gold Beach is currently. Um, in a position to take a dog that, that needs the kind of work that it does and the type of handler that. That it needs. They don't have somebody like that on staff right now. Um, so in the interest of, of. Uh, moving forward, uh, I, I coordinated with uh, uh. Sheriff Daniels and we've done a, um, we put together a, a, a liability. Uh, agreement that would protect us from liability. I'm still waiting for that to be sent back, but also I wanted to inform you and ask you. Based on the, on the outcome and the fact that nobody within the county can, can take the dog. I, I believe that it would be in the dog's best interest to leave it with, with its current handler that, that in, in Josephine County and let. Josephine County move forward with that, but I would need that you guys to um, okay that. Um, there's a few other things. We can, what I could do on that is I could, I can, um. Our next meeting is on the fourth. So we could, so we could formalize that. The dog is gonna go into training on, on um. On September sixth with the program they've got, that they've already, they, they're about to pay for, to get the dog retrained with the new handler. Um, but I'd like to formalize that transfer by board action in accordance with the procurement rules. If that would be acceptable to the county commission. Um, and if, if you'd like me to do that, I can do that for the next meeting and then we'll just, just have that done. But in the meantime, I also wanted to bring you up to speed on, on, on the rest of that issue. Um, I asked for those records. Um, on July thirtieth, I received nothing. I asked again on August second. Um, I said, please immediately provide this office with all records of training, certification. And deployments for all active dogs in the Curry County Sheriff's Office Canine Program for the last two fiscal years. Additionally, attach an accounting of the narcotics used for training and all DEA paperwork associated therewith. Um. Received nothing on August third. I sent a s- subsequent email based on your fail, Sheriff Ward, based on your failure to provide me with records detail in the training certification. And deployment of dogs in the canine program. The remaining dog in the program needs to be suspended from service effective immediately. That is the dog Hulk. That is, that is uh, 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 his handler is, is uh, the canine coordinator. Um. Um, I said additionally, your failure to provide the policy regarding call response based on priority for legal review potentially puts the county at extreme liability. I hereby make demand for immediate delivery of said policy to my office via email. I did receive an email back. Um, from the sheriff with that and he said that he had provided me um. The uh, the call response uh, uh, policy previously. I, I was provided with some documentation, but it was not a policy. It was uh, not exactly sure what it was. It was, it was nothing that, it was a, a kind of a prioritization of, of. How things would be responded to, um, but it certainly wasn't an official policy. Um. And then he, his email said, the training records of each dog is the responsibility of the handler. When Tim King resigned, he never turned in any records of his canine training. Um, they did have, they have CADs that were completed stating that, that um, Tim was out. Canine training on most every Wednesday. We only have one canine in service at present and this is Sergeant Van Zelf, the canine handler. Um, he has all of his training records and the dog is certified. Uh, that's what he states here. Um, I have not been provided with any of those records. Um, so. I, based on the failure to, um, I, I wrote a subsequent, uh, subsequent, um. Email, let me just check the data back to make sure I'm doing that. Okay. I, I clarified that the maintenance records, we actually, we actually need them so that I can verify that we have, that we are protecting ourselves from liability. In the, in the event that one of these dogs is out and in service and bites somebody or something happens. That, that, and the dog is not properly certified and trained, it exposes the county to extreme liability. Um. So I asked. I uh, I asked him again on August nineteenth. Um. And I s- I s- I told, I again. Uh, reiterated the importance of giving, of providing the documentation of the certification of training and, and all the records. And I also asked that, that um, whether, whether these documents were being maintained on PAC Track, which is a, which is a canine. Uh, training online record service that the county has been paying for, for some years. And um, so it should be fairly easy to supply those. Um. I asked that, that copies of any records be provided to me and. I still have not been given any. I, I, then, uh, uh, let's see, I've moved forward here. Um, after that, the next, the next uh, email that I sent was August twentieth. Said sheriff, I have today been contacted by a former employee of the sheriff's department and others who have made various specific allegations about the oversight, supervision. And maintenance of the county's canine program. Specifically, it has been alleged that the remaining dog is not currently certified and has not been for some time. Um, and that various other allegations were made and I, I reiterated my request for the records, my, my need to see those so that I can, so that I can. Deal with these allegations in, and, and whether, you know, either verify them or, or put them to bed. Um. Uh, still no response. Uh. I. Let's see, that was August twentieth. Um. We're gonna go forward here. Yeah, I got, I did receive a, I received an email from, uh, at that last request, I extended it beyond the sheriff, so I did receive. Something from DJ Storons and I said, um, it says that she was, the only records that she was involved. In maintaining were files she created when they acquired, purchased the canines. Um. She put that information and documentation um, into these files. She sent that to um, to uh. Sheriff Ward, a couple of weeks ago, I have not been provided with that information either. Um, she also is aware of PAC Track. She thought the. Records may have been kept on there. I was able to access PAC Track and verify that that PAC Track was not. That no one has, has been sto- uh, keeping records on PAC Track, but we have been paying for the service for the last few years and not using it. Um, which again, that, that goes to support Commissioner Elect, um. Um, Hollinger's recommendation that we do an audit of the sheriff's department so that we can verify how the money's being spent. And, and what is being spent on in the sheriff's department. And I think based on what I'm seeing here, I would heartily agree with that and, and uh. And advise that we move forward with that kind of audit as quickly as possible and make it um. Uh, uh, we need to do a detailed audit to find out what is happening with the public's money in the, in the Curry County Sheriff's Department. Um. Let's see, based August twenty second, uh, email to the sheriff, please be advised that having not received documents. Integral to determining liability issues related to the county canine program as requested numerous times. I have now submitted a public information request for the related documents, which I have never had to do. Um, as the Director of County Operations and County Council, I, I find that to be repugnant. That I am, that I am being rebuffed in my, in my role as, as a liability. I, I, I'm, I'm, I am the person that, that is in, is in charge of reviewing and assessing liability. And then coordinating with our insurance company regarding that, these liabilities. That's why I'm asking for this information. It's important. And I am being ignored. And when I'm being ignored. The, the taxpayers are being ignored. The money that is being put at risk is money that the taxpayers are paying. To have these services performed in a, in a uh economically responsible manner. Um. Then, let's see, I uh, I was told in an earlier email that, that I had, I had request, I had recommended that the, that the. Canine program be suspended until I received the documents that I could verify that it was in, in um. In uh, conformance with the, with the requirements to limit liability and I was, I received an email. Um. I didn't receive it. I, I found out this email gone to the um, had, had gone to our finance department that I was made aware of. Um, and it said, at the request of Sergeant Van Zelf, the K- the canine handler, we, we retired canine Hulk as of. August twenty second, twenty twenty four. This was sent um, on Monday, August twenty sixth. Uh, Zane was getting a five percent pay increase for being a canine handler and that ended with the retirement of canine Hulk. Please have Zane's payroll reflect this change. Hulk will live out the rest of his days as a continuing member of Zane's family. Um. That is not, the dog is again a county asset in previous, in, in, in previous situations. Uh, a separation agreement essentially has been, has been, has been created regarding a, a canine asset. Wherever it goes, it's same scenario that, you know, similar to what happened in Josephine County. We need to have an agreement. We need to, we need to transfer our liability with, by that agreement and, and thereby protect the county going forward. This is not acceptable. The sheriff is aware of it. And so I emailed him today and I said, sheriff, I have been made aware that you have again violated. County procurement rules with regard to transferring a canine to an individual for which you have no authority. As you know, any transfers of county property need to be approved in advance by the county commission. So at this point. That dog is no longer, it's been, it's been removed from the count, from the canine program. And it is now uh, being treated as a private asset. You remember what happens when, when. County assets start getting distributed to private uh, individuals. It's, it's a violation. It's actually a crime. We, we need to not do this. And uh, the sheriff was made aware of it and he um, for some reason was unable to um. To proceed in accordance with county rules. That, the, so right now, the, the dog is county asset is. Apparently no longer under the control and authority of, of um, the county. Of, of the sheriff's office. And in fact, I, that's, I had warned the sheriff way back, uh, well, last week. I said, if I, if I don't receive these documents, I'm gonna have to um, proceed to the, to the commission with a report saying, the, basically. Um, well, just see if I can, if I can find that, what I wrote to him. So that's, um, yeah, right here, I said, if the records are not um, provided to my office by the time dictated above, which was last week. I will proceed with a report to the county commission alleging cumulative mismanagement, a lack of oversight. And failure to supervise by your office with regard to the canine program. Based on what I have seen so far with this. I also am very concerned that, that cumulative mismanagement extends far beyond this uh, this. Uh. Mess that is the, that is, is the canine program. What I can see, based on the records that I have been able to. To uh, find myself and also by talking to former members of the program. I don't believe that the canine program has even been in operation for some time. I mean, it's. I know that dogs have been out, that have been, they have been out in service while they are not, while they are not certified. At least for part of this year. And we are paying people to be driving around with, with dogs that are not certified, putting, putting the uh. Uh, the members of the public at risk, putting the county at risk. All this needs to stop. Unacceptable at every level. And so I'm, I'm here to report that to you and I, I, I'm interested in having um. Direction from you, but I do also wanna tell you that I have contacted our insurer, CIS. And I spoke, I, I, I spoke with an auditor yesterday and um, I also sent, I sent a copy of this. Uh, the email trends, uh, record regarding all of this to our pre-loss uh, attorney up there. And, and so that we can start dealing with this. This is a very serious issue and it's gonna get a lot more serious.
And it's not gonna go away. Um. So there's a, I've, I've followed these email, uh, this email thread and um. And this is disturbing. Um. So e- everybody knows my involvement with the canine program. I volunteered, I helped start it. Uh, I didn't start it myself. There were a. A, a good group of deputies that um, that got this program off the ground, including getting donations, et cetera. Uh, but, but I was, I, well, I volunteered every week to, to do the training and set up the program. And the policies, the procedures, all of that. Um, I stepped away. After I won the primary, I stepped away from the program. Um, that's about the time that um, Sergeant Van Zelf transitioned from Brookings over here. And took over the canine, the canine coordinator role. Um, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna, uh, I'm, I'm not gonna say anything. Or ask any questions without the sheriff here. But there are a lot of questions that need to be answered. This brings up a, a whole list of things that I, it just doesn't make sense. Um, we had training every week, every Wednesday. In fact, I never missed a training. I did it for years. There were days that we had all of our dogs there. Crescent City was there. Del Norte County was there. Brookings PD was there. CHP officers were there off duty to go through the tactical part of what we were doing. We had multiple agitators. We had uh, at times fifteen cops there. Training in various scenarios and working with the dogs and um. And when I saw these emails, I looked at PAC Track. So PAC Track for, if you don't know, PAC Track is a computer program that we paid for. It's not, it's not super expensive. It's probably a few hundred dollars a year. Uh, but we, we paid for that. It's a program that collects. It's a program that collects certifications, daily training logs, uh, weekly training logs. I would sign them off. I would approve them. Um, it's, it's necessary to have that for a certification of a canine. Yeah, you don't just go get certified, you don't just go get certified, uh, on, you know, December 1st and then not do anything throughout the year to maintain that certification. You have to show those hours. You have to show, you, you have to document who your agitator is, what type of scenarios you're running, what type of, you know, you're doing obedience, you're doing bite and release, you're doing tracking, you're doing various, um, tasks that the dog, uh, needs to perform to a certain standard. And, um, and that's why we had that program in place. Our agitators were trained. They were, um, the program was very solid and very sound. I looked at PACT Track recently. It appears that when I walked away, they stopped using it. But yeah, we're still paying for it. I didn't find any entries after I left.
So you personally would do the logging in and?
Well, the deputies would, the deputies would get into the, while we were there, they'd pull out their laptops. They'd pull it up. They, they'd do their training narrative. They'd put that, put that information in there. Then I would review it and I would sign off on it. And then if they did stuff throughout the week, they would also add that additional stuff in there, whatever they were doing throughout the week. Sometimes they might get called away for an hour or two at training and then they would make that hour or two up, uh, later in the week and they, they'd include that and then I would review it and then, uh, sign it and acknowledge it. Their certifications were kept in there. So, so if Ted came to me and said, "Hey, canine coordinator Alcorn, I need, um, the certifications and I need the training logs for this dog that is going to court on whatever issue." I could literally go in the program, hit a button, print all that stuff out and the time it takes to print it, say, "Here you go." So it's a program BPD uses. It's, it's used all over, uh, uh, many canine programs use it. And there's others like it. That's just one, one program that's out there, but it's a good one.
But it's also, it's also possible to keep paper records as well.
You, you, sure, but if we're keeping paper records, then there, there should be, uh, there should be two records of that. One should be with the handler. One should be with the agency. So that, um, and then the record should be maintained, uh, for the, for, uh, three years beyond the service life of the dog. So, um, uh, this is no, this is not a secret here. I mean, this is like, we, we should have, we should have these things available. These dogs are a force multiplier. They save lives. But there's a lot of liability in, uh, handling the animals. And, and that liability, um, is, uh, reduced by the policy, procedure and program that you have established, which is why we went to the extent that we did. And it's kind of shocking to think that we haven't been doing any of that, which, which, the sheriff came and asked for more money for the program, which we gave. Then a few weeks later said, "The dog was not a good dog." It was, what, what was the word that he used? Anybody remember? Dirty dog. And wasn't well-trained. Well, that didn't make any sense to me. What, where'd that turnaround happen, right? None of this makes any sense and I just, I, I really wish the sheriff would just come in and give the, just give us the certs and the training logs and we can just eliminate this off of all of the other things that we have going on right now. And, and just answer some questions about what, what's going on. I, I don't, I don't get it. I don't get it. We can't have, uh, we should not have had a dog out there that is not certified and that hasn't been training. That, that, that puts every police officer in this county at risk because when a canine team shows up or you call for a canine team and they show up, there's an expectation with that, that, that team is well-trained. They are well-prepared and the officer who called for you or when you show up is depending on you to perform at a very high standard. And that standard comes through training. So what happened? What happened? I, I just, I don't get it. I don't understand. So, uh, we need some answers though.
But first of all, I think Ted, we need, so you said you have written a letter to Deputy Van Zelf? For that, so he's gonna keep the dog at home, so we've gotta get?
No, I, no, I only just learned about this today.
Okay, so I guess first of all, we need to get a, an agreement that, you know, where, you can have the dog and we're not liable anymore. That's be a?
That's the thing that you, that's the, that we need to have that agreement.
Yeah.
And, and the commissioners who are in charge of disposing of surplus property of the county. That's an agreement between the commissioners and the person who's gonna be receiving the property.
Yeah, and I absolutely?
You're gonna write it up, right? You're gonna?
Well, I mean, I'll, I'll use, I'll use the, the, I'll use the, as a model.
Yeah.
The ones that have been done for previous dog distributions. I think there was a, there was a deputy stout, took a dog, took a dog, uh, out of the system and there's, you know, it's not like I'm inventing the wheel.
And, and that dog is going to stay with, there's, I would not support that dog going anywhere other than with Zane and his family. That dog is part of that family and that dog will stay.
I'm just saying that, that, um, that flouting and ignoring the rules of Curry County is, is what is going on here. And that's, that, the dog is, it, you can try, but the dog is the property of Curry County. So I don't care who you think you are. You can't distribute property unless you are, unless it is approved by the commissioners. That is very clear. And in fact, the sheriff has signed those very contracts. He signed the contract with, with Deputy Stout, former Deputy Stout. He knows what the process is. So I don't know what's going on here, but I'm not comfortable with it.
Yeah, no, that, that can be done ahead of time. It should have been done ahead of time.
Yeah, so it's all done and?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know it's coming, so you, you, you prepare the document, you sign it and the dog's retired subsequent to that. And, and I, there's no way I would sup, I mean, that's part, that dog is part of their family. So that dog stays there for sure. It's just how it was done. That's, it's just, it shouldn't have been done that way. Which is another piece that doesn't make sense. And then here's another thing that doesn't make sense. So, so we're giving up a dog to another county, but we're, but we're retiring a dog. And, uh, none of it makes sense. But, uh, maybe the sheriff can come and answer the, those questions.
Agreed, but I think the, the question at hand right now that, um, Director Fitzgerald is looking for is some direction on how to proceed with some of the obstacles that were being faced in the fa, in, in, in the midst of, uh, potential litigation and/or, uh, you know, the, the identifying, um, information for insurance purposes, risk management and, um, and, uh, you know, what, in terms of proceeding, you know, it's, it, we have, uh, apparently, you know, there's a, there's a, 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 a communication break that's occurred, um, in terms of responding to that information and getting the information back. So, uh, we call in a executive session to discuss some of these matters.
That, that would probably be the next, that'd be the ma, next move. We're talking about potential litigation, so there's an exception that would allow an executive session for this.
So I, I would suggest that we, we, we do that. Uh, in the meantime, prepare, uh, the contract for Josephine County and, and also for Sergeant Van Zelf.
So we can schedule, we can schedule a executive session for the next meeting, which is on the 4th of September.
Yeah, could we, could we have that meeting prior to the, the public meeting? So we'd have something to report or?
Or even maybe something to take action on.
Yeah, let's do, let's, let's start the meeting with, let's start the meeting with the executive session then.
Do executive session at 5:00, regular meeting at 6:00.
Okay.
Do we need, I was just thinking time, do we, you know, 5:00 is an hour. Yeah, if we did it at 4:00?
I, I think, you know, I'm just, an hour is probably suitable, I would assume. I, I, I don't?
I would hope, but I just, I'm trying to give us a little leeway.
Yeah.
Maybe an hour and a half.
4:30?
4:30, okay.
Yeah, let's go an hour and a half just to be on the safe side.
Okay.
We, we do need to get the two, uh, released liabilities right away though, especially with Zane and his, um,
Right.
He's got the dog at home, so. We do need to do that. And so my understanding is we're gonna address this problem by having an executive session on, on the next meeting day at 4:30. To address these specific issues. So you'll send the sheriff a message about attending that executive session?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm surprised he wasn't here for Sam.
Well, I'm, I'm also, I mean, I'm, I, in the event that he doesn't attend, you may be in favor of, of distributing that dog to, um, to Zane Van Zelf. I, I don't, I don't know that, I don't know that I can justify. I, I, I wanna, I wanna know how the dog was maintained before we're distributing the dog. I, I want, I want the records so that I can see what the program was that the dog, that, that the county has been paying for, for some years. I, I really?
Well, we're required to maintain, as Commissioner Alcorn had mentioned, we're required to maintain those records for three years. So we have to have the records. I don't think that's, uh, I don't think that's a, a necessarily a negotiable, um, item.
No.
And so, um, and then in terms of the, of, of an audit, um, I, uh, I agree. We need to move forward. Um, I think we should, you know, consider, um, a comprehensive level audit, uh, procedural, um, in terms of policy, procedure and finances.
Yeah, I think finances are just a portion of this.
Right, you know, make sure that the procedures, so what's actually happening is following the policies within our departments, um, within the, that department and, um, because, you know, I'm, are, are, what are, what is the? I'm a little, um, I'm a little out of the loop on this, but what is the, what is the requirements? We've, we've discussed a lot about the requirements on maintaining dog training records, but what about, um, what about personnel officer, uh, and personnel records and training? I would assume that there's a similar level, probably, maybe it's not as, maybe it's not as strong, but we?
No, it is. It's, it's every bit as strong. I mean, DPSST requires, uh, certain training be conducted within certain periods of time and there be a certain number of hours associated with certain topics to maintain your certificate.
So, you know?
I can, I can research what, what the sheriff's department policy is on that. I'd be, I'd be interested. I've, I've been asking for various policies to be provided to my office for review as, as things, as I've been being made aware of, of issues that we can also discuss at the, at the upcoming executive session. But I haven't been provided with, with any, any, uh, specific policies. I, I, I'm aware that, I'm aware that there, um, there's an online information management system that is accessible with, with, uh?
So you, it's Lexipol, right? Okay, that's the gold standard for, uh, policy and procedure. Okay, that's the go-to for the majority of law enforcement agencies. They use Lexipol. They, there's some commonalities that, you know, there, there's, there are certain topics of policy that every department's gonna follow, you know, the, the deadly force policy. It's dictated by law. So that's gonna be written in there. So every department is gonna follow that standard. Then there may be some subtle changes that some departments have. Like if you have a department that's got 50 dogs, for example, their policies may be different than a department that has two or three. Their training requirements may be different, the days they train, et cetera. So it's gonna be written into their policy. There'll be some subtle differences. But Lexipol is, um, something that you can quickly and rapidly access. You enter a password and you immediately get the information you need. You should have access to that. You're defending the county. You're defending the sheriff's office.
Right.
You should have access to those policies and procedures.
I will, uh, work on that.
Okay, well, thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Any further Ted? Any further updates?
That's it. That's it for me. Um, that's what I've been working on.
Um, I, I, back to that for just a second. So we're talking about potentially doing some type of audit or multiple audits or types of audits that cost money. Earlier, uh, we spoke with Commissioner-elect Hollinger. He had an idea to pay for it. If we don't have a canine program and that money that we directed from our own salaries is go, not going there anymore.
Which is a total of about $66,000 if I'm not mistaken.
So can that money be directed to pay for that, um, or to somehow be?
I will, I will ask, I will ask our finance director, Kena Wolf, to take a look at that. And I think that, I think that that would probably, we'd have to do some sort of supplementary budget. But it seems like that, I mean, right, right now, we, we don't have a, we don't have a canine program and we didn't have a canine program at, at, at the end of the budget, at the beginning of the budget year or before, from what, from what my research shows. So, um, I think that's a thing we should, we should definitely think about. I'll, I'll talk to, uh, I'll talk to Kena and I'll have a report at the next meeting.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I think it would only just require a supplemental budget.
Yeah.
Well, I'd be, I'd be for that. I wanna see that money, I wanna see that money moving us closer to a funding solution than further away. So. All right, that takes us up to, um, elected official updates. John?
So I got some good news to share.
Well, that's nice.
Yeah, so you remember we talked about, um, way back when we logged that property on the airport road right across from the Pacific High School? So Porterford Rotary contacted me. They have 300 redwood trees.
Nice.
At a value of around $9,000. They're gonna be, and they're gonna donate the trees and the, the, uh, transporting the trees to them, to us and, and they'll be here in November. And he's got the high school. They got the high schools that folks are gonna help plant them. But we know that 300 trees is not enough. So we, we, and we, you know, we, we knew we were gonna have to replant, so we'll get?
Well, every, every little bit helps.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's 300.
We weren't getting redwoods, so, so we'll just, we'll just mix them in.
And their recommendation is to do, I think, which was everybody's recommendation, is some redwoods, some cedar, some doug fir. He's, they said spruce. I'm not a big spruce guy.
I was thinking about spruce, especially right there. It'll naturally replant by itself pretty well. It's, it, there're spruce trees around. They come back like grass.
And you know all about that kinda stuff, so whatever, you know, I know there's a, probably a, how?
Yeah, we, we?
Per acre, this is how many trees you need.
Yep.
So they're ready to do it as soon as we burn after the first?
Okay, and some of that stuff, we're, we're thinking about, we're gonna, we're gonna try to burn what we can if the conditions are right. But in the meantime, I'm talking to the road department about, about maybe moving some of that stuff off-site so that we'll have some, you, you know, the stuff that's right.
Some yump pile kinda?
Yeah, and if we could get it, I'd love to grind it, but it's too primitive. It's too expensive. But I also don't want to create like a health hazard right next to that, right next to the school. So it's kind of a, it's a, we're working on that. We'll, we'll, we'll come up with something.
Is, um, is Porterford using the, um, Archangel Ancient Tree, um, program?
He didn't say anything about Archangel, I don't think.
So they were here, God, it's been seven years ago. But, um, they, they were a program that, um, they essentially took drafts off of the largest, uh, redwoods, um, in the world. They have General Sherman and, um, basically the biggest redwoods in the world. I, the, and the idea was they had the genetic DNA to outlast everything else. And so we ended up planting a bunch of those up at Lob's Creek that have done really well. Anyways, I, I didn't know if they, um?
It might be, Jake, 'cause I mean, 300?
Well, Porterford was part of the program.
$8,000, that's, there's, these are, these are expensive trees.
Yeah, it could be.
Yeah.
Archangel ask.
Yeah.
That's it, sir.
All right, Jake?
Um, I just wanted to briefly hit on, um, our next month's, um, uh, business of the month and?
Uh, business of the month and individual community members of the month. And I have, uh, I have two nominations. I've, um, for the, um, organization of the month. Um, I was, uh, going to recommend, uh, Remax. Um, Coastal Country Remax. They just recently completed a, um. A fundraising effort for Caitlin's Cause, um, which, if you're not aware, you, I'm sure a lot of you are aware. You know what Caitlin's Cause is. Um, and, uh, they do a lot of fundraising. Efforts, not just that one, but several. Um, there seem to be in the middle of a lot for the shelter and. Different organizations, so I thought that that would be a good recommendation to consider. Um, and then, um, for the, uh, individuals of the month, um. Uh, Tyler and Amanda Travis, it would be a duo. Um, most people don't know Tyler and Amanda, but, uh, Tyler and Amanda have been the lead organizers. For, um, Brookings Youth, uh, Basketball and Brookings Little League. So nine months of the year, they are volunteering their time for youth sports and they are, they are the. The presidents of both leagues, uh, which obviously we all know are volunteer positions, no pay, tons of work. Um, and, uh, they just, they give everything they got. And Amanda also coaches high school volleyball. Um, they just, they are. They're the, the, you know, the small percentage of people who make big differences. So I thought that would be something to consider.
All right, sounds good.
I'll bring it to, uh, for a vote, and, cause we may still get some more nominations before Wednesday. Um, so I'll bring that for a vote.
Rabia was on my list, but she broke my screen protector yesterday.
I heard.
So. She broke what? A screen protector. Oh, oh, yeah. Tablet. So.
I, I heard she broke your tablet.
No, just the screen protector. So she's.
Rumors of ru-, they are so fast.
She's, she's not on my, uh, list. So, uh, so I have, I have. So I have two, two things, uh, briefly. One, uh, I got an email from a resident. She didn't want me to use her name and I won't, uh, but she did ask me to bring this up, uh, today. I brought it up the DCO meeting, but I also wanna bring it up in this meeting. She has a lot of concerns about. The, um, RVs that are being parked and the turnouts up the, uh. Up the rivers, up Carpenterville and various other places throughout the county. And a lack of enforcement with our ordinances. And, um, she is. Uh, she has asked that we, um, we, we do, we take action on the ordinance that we. Uh, that, that we implemented. So, uh, I told her that I would, uh, absolutely bring this up at the meeting tonight. And, uh, I know that we discussed earlier, uh, getting everybody back to the table and having another conversation. About maybe even having a day where we go out and, um, and enforce our ordinance. We, you know, we had a favorable ruling in the Supreme Court regarding this issue. Uh, I did see an email from the DISC attorney, uh, immediately following that ruling that, uh, he would be prosecuting those cases. So, um, this is, this is something that we're starting to see more of. Um, I see it every day and I've gotten several calls, emails and text messages about it, so. Um, I think, I think we need to have that meeting sooner than later and address it before, uh, we have another situation that. You know, similar to Rainbow Rock, so. Um, they, and I, and, and thank you, I won't, I almost said your name, but I won't. Thank you for the email and, uh, I would encourage everybody to continue to email us about, uh, these types of problems. We're doing our best to address them. And then if you guys remember the last, uh, meeting we had, there was, uh, a gentleman who got up and spoke at the meeting. He was a contractor and spoke about the, the, yeah, uh, John, uh, really good guy.
Yeah.
I had, I had a meeting with him yesterday and, uh, we had a really good conversation and he, he's, he's not, he's a really good guy. He's not complaining, he's not, um, he, he's not doing that. He just is really being impacted by, by what's going on with our, our planning. Situation here in Curry County and it's really, i- it's, you know, this is, it's tied to funding. It, it's absolutely tied to funding and, and he was just, uh, we were discussing options and ideas. I know we have a, a point-five position we're putting in there, part-time position, that will hopefully, uh. Hopefully help a little bit, but it's not a long-term solution at all. And we really, I think we really need to consider. The impacts of not having a full-time, very competent, um, expert in that position. Um, and the impacts it's having on, on some of our construction and our, our builders, our contractors. It's, um, it's costing them a lot of money and, and we're not getting the revenue that we would get if, if that area was thriving, so. Um, that may be something that we, we look at in the long term and, in, um. Reprioritizing. So I just ask you, think about that. Uh, both of you guys think about that. Patrick, think about that. And we need to come up with some solutions around that particular, uh, topic. I just wanted to say, I also talked to John Landers briefly and he, I wanted to say that he, uh, did compliment the building department. And, and Garrett Thompson's managing direction of the building department and, uh, so I just wanted to take my hat off to Garrett out here for the public. Yeah.
Um, I've got a good friend, he grew up here in Oregon, uh, Lane County. Um, he has, he started out in, uh, a family-owned structural engineering firm. He's now branched out, uh, by himself, started a nationwide firm. Uh, that, that deals with a lot of planning and building. Um, I'll reach out to him. But would this be something that he may already do, or maybe we could subcontract him to do as well? Uh, just because I know all throughout Oregon and, uh, even down in Curry County, he has contacts for, uh. People he uses for, for building and planning when it comes to houses or commercial properties, so. Um, I'll pick his brain a little bit about that as well and see.
If we can get someone like that involved and, and get them here, I mean, look at, look at finance, right? Look at, look at the, look at the impacts that Kena has had, right, for this county. Um, if we can, if we can use that strategy in, in that area. Uh, I, 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 I think the impact, we're gonna see the impacts of that immediately, so.
Yeah.
Uh, you know.
I'll call around and, uh, I'll, I'll see what I can do to dig up some, some more information on that.
And I just, I bring that up because, you know, right now, we're so focused on the issues surrounding public safety and lack thereof. We're so focused on, um, um, these pressing issues that we have in the county. I just don't wanna lose sight of that one, you know, and, and that's an important one, it's important, um.
But it's also a department that brings us revenue.
It is.
Yeah.
And expands the tax base.
Like assessment taxation, you're right, Brad, it's a, it, it's a generator, so we, yeah, we gotta accentuate that.
I'll get my feelers out there.
Hey, and I wanted to, Pat, say, say something to you when you said DA, so. Uh, Josh has got a helper, Pat Foley, who I've known for a long, long time. He's a, um, senior citizen that is back to work for half a day and, um, it, I, he just. I think he's been well-received and, um, yeah, it's just.
Yeah.
So it's, it's good to.
He's former, former Curry County DA.
Was he? I didn't, I didn't know that.
Yep.
I know he's, um, if we ever get invaded, that's the place to go, cause as a UPS driver, we deliver tons of. Pat is well-armed.
All right, that's, that's all I have. Any, anything else? All right, it is five forty-two and we'll conclude this meeting. Thank you.